And I'll call this meeting to order, please stand for, uh, Budget Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for coming out, leaving their woodstoves and pellet stoves tonight to this warm facility. Calling the meeting to order for May 9th of this Virgin City Council. Our, I have one amendment to the agenda, it's going to be item number F under number five. And Lynn wants to talk about grass clippings. The reason it appears on account, I want to put it on the agenda is if it requires action, we should have it on there. Okay? Does anybody else have any agenda amendments? If not, uh, this is where I'm starting this one, hopefully nobody's offended by it. Does anyone have the need to disclose about any items on tonight's agenda? Hearing not, we'll move right along. I'd asked for approval of minutes for the city council dated April 25th, 2017. Lowell made the second, do I have a second? Lynn made the second. And Rennie has got his track shoes on and... Any omissions, corrections, or errors on the minutes?
Yep.
Rennie? Yeah, I'll go ahead and do yours and then I'll leave this here.
Page two, last paragraph, Hughes Community Group. The first sentence, the first sentence is not complete. I think probably the intention was is that the first and second sentences would be together. So, it would read, "Reported their volunteer organization comprised of parents, teachers, administrators, and community friends," my suggestion would be, comma, small t on this, year, scratch they, and continue with the rest of the sentence. So it would then read, "Organization comprised of parents, teachers, administrators, and community friends. This year will host the student talent show." That completes the sentence. Because I, it looks like that's what you probably wanted to do, but didn't. That's all I had.
Any other corrections, omissions, or errors? Hearing none, all those in favor of passing those minutes?
Aye.
Oppose? So carried. Any discussion questions on the warrants? Hearing none, uh, we'll get that around, Rennie signed that, did you? Yeah. Okay. And, uh, here's where we have a little surprise for you, citizens' comments, issues not otherwise on the agenda. We're actually going to put Rennie in there and he's going to do a little presentation.
Well, behind me on the fire department screen here is a video that I'm going to show. And this is the new Virgens video. It was produced by Red Barn Productions at a considerable discount for the Virgens partnership. We're the ones that hired them to do this video. A lot of photo shoots were done through the year. It's been, actually, we're approaching a year since we started the project. You'll see a lot of the shoots that are in the summertime. So, we began with the project last summer and into the fall to get all of the photo shoots that we could. And then, of course, there's a lot of editing and so on. So, we really thank Red Barn Production for doing this. And also all the people that you will see who are either saying something on the video or allowed us permission to video them through this whole thing. The reason we produced the video is that in these days of promoting anything, and this applies to towns and cities, is that you have to do it the modern way. And with the partnership, we do a lot on social media, that's really important, that's what people look at. And, um, in producing videos, because people want to see something happen on their computer, on their phone, whatever. So, we've produced this video to be distributed free to anyone who wants to use it. The more people who want to use it, the better it is. Free to businesses, free to real estate agents, free to even individuals who want to say, hey, relative or friend way off someplace else in the country, come to my town because this is what it's like. So, we're really proud of this video and we hope that people will use it as much as they can because the more people use it, the better it is for Virgens. Now, hopefully I can get the technology to work and you'll be able to watch it. It's very short, it's slightly less than three minutes.
And Rennie, I've already talked about it, we're not serving popcorn.
I hope there's enough volume off of my computer to do this.
You may want to give it a second to load?
Yep.
Because for whatever reason, it's not loaded.
Do you think it'll continue loading once I start?
It will, but you'll get some, it'll stall.
Oh.
Uh, like it did before. I don't know why it dropped out, Rennie, we should have probably fired it just before and just turned the TV off. Is, does it, is that moving or not, I can't tell.
It's not moving, so I'm going to try.
Okay, go ahead and fire it and see what happens. Worst thing you can do is restart it. Yeah, but it plays fast enough that it doesn't load fast enough.
We are one square mile huge. There's very little you cannot do by foot or on your bicycle. We have shops up and down Main Street that provide just about anything you might need. We have galleries opening, we have several restaurants.
Our location is excellent. We're very lucky to be in between Burlington and Middlebury and Green Mountains and ski areas of Lake Champlain.
It's just a perfect spot to sit, to live, to enjoy, to recreate.
It's not unusual on a summer evening to walk by the green and there's a band playing. Our library right down the street is an architectural gem. People come from all over to take photographs just to step inside. We have a fully restored opera house, things that many other places of similar size can't even dream of having. And we have them here if they're alive.
What we have here is what the next two generations want to have, may raise a family.
The first week that we were in our house, it felt like more home than anywhere else we had lived.
We rely on each other and I think that that sort of overlaps into the community as a whole. We all stand behind our organizations that beat us.
We all really work together to make sure that Virgens continues to thrive.
All of the people are one thing, it pulls up my heartstrings. And when I think about the friends that I've been there with.
It's just a community where you just feel like you belong, whether you're visiting for a moment or staying for a lifetime.
I should have been here a long time ago.
When I moved here about 27 years ago, I lived in the city of New York.
Well, we relocated to Virgens from St. Thomas.
We lived in suburban Seattle.
Coming from Miami, I fell in love with Virgens.
And the music is by our local musician, Mateo Palmer. And, um, he's quite famous in his own right. And, um, we were fortunate that... Whoa. Yeah, that's part of the video company, they had this thing above Vermont, they call it Sexy Vermont. So, the amount of money that, for it, as I said, was significantly less than what this production would normally cost. I don't want to say it publicly because it is such a difference. They did it for about a tenth of the cost of normally doing this kind of a production. And we did raise the money from various folks and we got enough money to pay for the video. And, and actually, and then some. So that we, their, our agreement with them was if we raised more money than they charged us, that we'd appreciate more money because they were doing it at such a loss. And so we were able to give them more money. And, um, we intend to promote this because obviously, one of the reasons why Red Barn did it is to get publicity in order to sell productions elsewhere. So we hope to do this, present this video at the meeting of the 24 designated downtowns in June. And so that all of the other downtowns can see what could be done and maybe they'll hire them so that they'll make up for what they lost doing it for us. So, that is it.
So is that linked on Virgens partnership or on the city's link, or where is, how do you link it up?
Well, this is the first public viewing, no one else has seen it publicly, council is the first one. And now we will start distributing it, it'll probably be on our website in any other place that we can put it so that you can just go in and grab it and use it.
I want to thank Rennie and the partnership for taking this task on. It's a great video and does a great job selling our beautiful city. Okay. So, next item we're going to move to is...
I want to use citizens' comments. I just wanted to let everyone know that the instruments have been chosen for the park. There's actually seven major instruments that are going to be purchased. So I just wanted everyone to know, they've been chosen, they've been approved by the Rotary and the Basin Committee. And now it's just a matter of finding out if we need a permit or can go ahead and order the instruments. When we order them, it only takes two weeks, so we're hoping to have this in the ground before the 4th of July.
I can scratch you off from down below, Lynn.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
No, because you don't have my script. No, pick it up, there it is, right there. So, we'll go to 5A, Mel, you want to?
Sure. I want to back up a little bit here because I know that Mike was not on the city council. And I don't, I'm pretty sure that Mark, you were not on the city council. And this goes back to July of 2015, so my guess is that you might not have been on the city council either. All right? So, you know, this, if that's not enough evidence for you to show how projects can get stalled, I've just explained that to you. So back in, um, I'm not sure which planning effort this goes back to, but I think, Rennie, way, way back in your time, the thought about having, having a sidewalk extension project, you know, going out, you know, towards, you know, where the police station is and the dent cans store. And I'm not sure how we were ever going to get through the underpass, either the new one or the old one, but get, get a loop, if you will, to be able to go out to the park and ride or safely. Because really, you know, there isn't, there isn't sidewalks north of, north of Kennedy Brothers. So, it was back, and like I say, that's been, it's been preliminary studies through Addison County Regional Planning. And, um, and so it was in the summer of 2015, Greg Edwards and one of the committees that was an offshoot of something, some planning effort that we did, applied for a grant through the state of Vermont. And this was on the agenda to a city council meeting that was held in July of 2015. And it, I shudder a little bit at the cost of this. This is a project of eight or 900 lineal feet of sidewalk, but it's, it's a complicated sidewalk. It runs up against Country Home Products warehouse. There's a drainage mess before you get to, to the, I shouldn't say dent cans store, Champlain Discount Foods. Sorry about that. And, and if you apply for money through the federal government, it's way more complicated than if it was just having my crew go out and extend a sidewalk to McKnight Lane. Okay? It's a much different project. And, uh, so, we applied for this grant and we received a grant against a project that was some $300,000. If you can imagine this, it's like, where is this money? Where does this money go? And a lot of it is just the federal steps, all of that you have to take to, to comply with everything. So, we received a $274,000 grant, the local share was $30,500. The city council in July of 2015 earmarked $30,500 from the Water Tower Fund. And in went the grant application, we were awarded the grant, and we signed a grant agreement with V-Trans in March of 2016. And it's really because I got too many things on my plate. I know it's there and I know we got to get, doing something with this thing because the project has to be, this grant has an award date. Award end date is October 15th, 2020. So, they give you a lot of time, but you got to get started or you're never going to get there. So, um, I met with John LeBarge, who is the, who was the state person involved with this grant and came down with their timeline. And I feel as if I'm in a, I'm in a point that I, a feeling very similar to what I had probably 20 years ago when the city got all kinds of grants and I didn't have the time, given all of my other work to do, to shepherd these projects. And so, with the council's approval, I hired Paul Vishon to do some work for the city so that he could concentrate and, because my life is just one big set of interruptions, is really, is really what it is. And so, projects like this, you really need a project manager. I mean, it's fine, I, I'm able to do, you know, the project up here in front of, uh, the sidewalk project in front of hired hand. Those kinds of things are fairly simple because they're a very simple grant process. There's no permits involved and you can just do the project you're done. This is not this way. This is, you know, very regulated money, bureaucratic, it's, it's very structured. So, in this instance, Dave Crawford, I know, Rennie knows Dave. Dave is a, he's a retired, I'll call him, he retired municipal manager. He worked for the town of Middlebury, he worked for Essex Junction. He could go through a number of towns that he worked for. And, uh, he does this kind of work where he can, he's a project guy. And he can shepherd this project. And so, uh, what I'm here tonight is, is to get, if the city, unless, and again, there's members that were, there were, there's people sitting at the table that weren't here in 2015. And so I don't want to assume anything, all right? We haven't spent any money, we've got this grant. But I'd like to, I'd like to move forward with the project and to be able to keep it, uh, you know, on a schedule. You know, this project is not a 2000, is not a 2017 project, but hopefully could be an early 2018 project. One of the, another reason why I've been holding off on this project is because of Vermont Gas. And when David and I were looking at the Vermont Gas plans, I was a little surprised to see that they were dated 2013. So, it seems like just yesterday we were talking about that, so, and there's no pipe in the ground in Virgens. So, there is a Vermont Gas line coming in on the police station side of the road. That's got to be coordinated with this project as well. So, uh, so what I'm seeking for tonight is the authority to hire David on a part-time basis. The, the, the grant, you know, the, the grant budget actually has $27,000 of project management funds in it. You know, I mean, it's a $300,000 grant, there's $40,000 of engineering, there's $8,000 of right-of-way cost, there's $27,000 of, of project management cost. And so the budget affords, affords the hiring of someone that would be a city employee. This isn't hiring a contractor, this is a city employee. And by having it be a city employee, it actually saves us some money doing it that way as opposed to, you know, hiring another company. Because the way these are done, you actually have to have three separate entities, a project manager, engineering, and compliance to make sure that the project is built in accordance with the plan. And so, you know, instead of having three different companies do it, you know, we would, under, under this method, David would be the assigned project manager. We have an engineering firm that we've been working with on this, on this project. And we think that probably the inspection could still be done in-house without a third, without a third party. We'll pass that bridge, because the state's involved with this, with this as well. So that's what I'm looking for, is to, in essence, use up to that $27,000 afforded in the grant for part-time, for a part-time project manager for this sidewalk extension project.
You need a motion, or what would you need?
I need something, yeah.
A motion to hire Dave under this agreement as proposed by the city manager.
A motion by Rennie, second by Lowell. Is there any other discussion?
Just one quick question, will Jim's team be doing the actual work out there?
No, not at all. This will be a bid, you know, this will be engineered, publicly bid, given the scale of project. No, that will, it is not, this is not a public works job.
All right.
Two questions on the agreement itself, just the language we got. At-will employment with a two-week notice?
Yep.
Usually at-will means, the at-will is, you can get rid of somebody or not.
Well, let me just tell you, this is a draft agreement that, you know, David, we haven't, this hasn't been some fully, there's lots of blanks in there, to be honest with you, as you can see. And we haven't finalized negotiations.
I realize it's probably just cut and paste, but that's, it can be done this way. It's just you open yourself up to the fact that it's not quite an at-will. So if you want an at-will, then having a two-week notice.
That'd be fine.
You guys can talk about that, I just, you also have an average of a maximum of 16 hours. So it's, not sure you'd have an average of a maximum.
Okay, yeah, like I said, we, you know, this is something, we want to just get out in your agenda packets. We haven't, this actually, what they have, David, is not the latest version of this because I had to get it out in your, in your packet, so it's still a work in progress. We'll try to clean it up, appreciate that.
So, Rennie, your motion, I believe, as directed to this document, you want to change that in any way to, you know?
I was just getting a heads up.
No, 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 and, and I don't know if, if he changes, if he withdraws some of the information out of the motion.
Yeah, I don't think the motion, yeah, the motion is not, isn't tied to, the motion, I don't think is tied to that specific piece of paper.
Well, I just said, um, I thought I said the agreement as given by the... If that's the way you've got it, that's good enough.
And Lowell agrees with that? Okay, I just want to make sure we got it clear as mud. All those in favor? Oppose? So carry? All right?
Thanks, David.
That's short, that's sweet.
I'm really looking forward to this, the, just briefly, I've, my last full-time job was several years ago in, as the village manager of Essex Junction. And I pulled out of that so that they could try again at not merger, but combining departments. So I've been doing part-time work since then. And, uh, in the last year, I really haven't had much. And I sat down and said, okay, what's my perfect job? About two days a week, not more than 35 miles away from home, that's South Burlington. And give me time and challenge that I want to have. This matches all of those and it's got another bonus. My son lives, um, just outside the village in Ferrisburg, Carl Crawford. He's done some work as an engineer here. So I'll be able to combine it with seeing grandchildren. In fact, I'll be leaving here to try to catch up with them at a baseball game. So that's a, that's a real issue, I mean, I really want to do something that I can contribute, but I also want to, you know, have a good time in some retirement.
Great, thank you very much for coming in.
Yep, and I'll see the ballgame.
Good luck. Go to 5B, city green, tree removal recommendation. Did you get your email, Mel?
Did I get my email? I got an email dealing with...
Your letter, or email, or letter, whatever, True Green?
I want to separate the two things.
Okay.
So, one of the things is, if you've been through the park, if you, if you, you, if you want to protect your shoes, don't walk through the park when it's wet, all right? We have a real problem with the lack of grass in the park. And, uh, so Jim, you know, we've been a little bit frustrated about the park. And, you know, maybe some of it is because of the traffic on the park, but we really think that a lot of it is the lack of sunlight. But it might be attributable to the lack of good soil or fertilizer or combination of things. So one of the things that I did is, the company, when we had problems with the lawn at the police station, if you remember, I complained to Bread Loaf that this thing just doesn't look too good. And so Bread Loaf footed the bill from some of their profit, I'm sure, of the project. And they entered into a contract with True Green to come and manage the police station lawn for a year. And if you go over today, you'll find that that lawn is in much better shape. So, so anyway, I had True Green come down, take care, thank you, come down the other day. You were with us, Mike, Rennie, and Jim, to take a look at it. And they did send down a proposal, and for $650, I think is what it says, is that they would treat, you know, the park and get it back on its feet from a grass. However, there really is a tremendous lack of sunlight in this, in the city green. And I, and I like trees, but there really are, I think, five major trees that need to come out of that park. And, uh, if, I'm the tree warden and I have the right to get rid of diseased trees. And I'm not going to disease these trees so I can cut them down. But I want to speak to the council because if you really want to be able to grow grass, we've got to remove some trees. Now, to remove good trees on city property, there's a public hearing process. So, it's not like, you know, I go out and mark the trees and the city council says, yeah, go ahead, and down they come. There's actually a legal process for cutting down, um, good trees on public property, there's a statute. So, what I want to do is, I want to grow grass on that park. And to do that, I think that five trees want to, that need to come down. I haven't marked them yet, but there's two in the back and three in the front. The beautiful maple in the middle of the park is not on my list to come down. But there's a couple others behind that are, you know, not all that straight. So what I'd like to do is, is mark those trees and have the city council hold a public hearing on their, on their removal, those five trees. City council will decide whatever it wants to do. Okay, is that enough controversy for one night about trees?
Not yet, I'll stir up a little bit.
Okay, sure.
Two of them are the big maples behind the monument. And we, Rennie and I were talking, and so was Mel, one of those is definitely in bad shape. So, that possibly could lower their numbers if it would lower their pressure. if it would lower their pressure. And the other one is getting to an age where it probably needs to come down before it does damage. So we might be able to get by with that. Rennie?
Yeah, well, those trees actually are, are a step away from being declared hazardous, actually. They are way too big for a, a public park like that. Um, they are damaged. Uh, part of the, the, the branches are dead. And, uh, I, I know when I was manager, I had two similar trees removed from the City Green. So, in my view anyhow, those, those are probably mandatory. My suggestion to Malon, and, um, and I think we should do this, is to have the, the state forester come in. The state forester, they have them in regions, and they come in for nothing. And they will look at the trees, they'll test them, they'll do borings in the trees to see how healthy they are. And my guess is, by looking at some of them, that some of those trees are just not healthy. We can't tell, but they can tell. Um, and, um, we've used them before, we've had them come in and do city trees and to, to check whether they were bad, and we took them down. So, um, uh, that's a free service, and I think we should take advantage of it, because a few of those, I'm sure the forester will say have to come down anyhow.
So what do we need to do to, uh, get this going?
Well, I mean, I totally can get-
Show of hands, uh-
I can get in touch with them for, you know, if, 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 uh-
We're still going to have to have a public hearing on the other ones, no matter what the end result is, right?
Well, you don't need to have public hearing. Let's, let's say that a tree is diseased and, and unsafe. You don't need to have a public hearing to remove, remove a tree.
That one.
That, that, I'm just saying. To remove a tree that does not fall into that category, you do have to have a public hearing. And I'm actually absolutely fine, you know, taking this in, in steps. I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm not, uh, uh, you know, necessarily pounding the table here saying, let's have a public hearing, I want a chainsaw in the park, all right? But, you know, I just, uh, I, I want to respect the process, uh, because when you cut it down, it's down, and, and-
We have this state forester come out, test all five trees, and then we'll know, you know, these three trees are healthy. Then we can figure out, do we want to have a public hearing at that point? He may come back and say, guess what, all five trees are rotted in the middle.
That'd be fi, that'd be fine, yeah.
And then we don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, I know, I know that he's not going to find that, okay?
But we don't always find it.
So you also need permission to, to warn the meeting if, if we have to have them down?
You have to-
So can we give him permission to go ahead and warn the meeting after the fore, forester comes in? Or do we have to come back and have this discussion again and?
Yeah, try to wait to grow the grass though, if we wait too long.
Right. That's why I was saying that if we, if we have the gentleman come in, and he warns the meeting, we can just keep, keep mo, momentum going instead of, instead of stalling and, and losing growing season.
Yeah, True, yeah, True Green says that we, we can- We really can't grow any grass until we hit fall, or ne, or next spring, either one, so.
So they don't have to come down for the summer, is that what you're saying?
Well, they, they need to come down-
Some of it, some of it needs help, you know, anyway, some of the-
Six fifty is for something to do now, not for-
Yeah, yeah, for the existing grass.
Right.
Yeah, they would help get out some of the weeds and bring some of their good grass back in. So, and, and in the back of the park, there's, um, some moss that is starting to show, and the trees are part of the issue. Um, there's a tree that was planted in the memory of one of the governors, Snelling. And that's getting choked out by the two big maples that are there, that are quite old and, uh, need some attention, so.
So just so that everybody understands the, I could have brought you a map, and it's pretty easy to explain. If you want to go up to the park and, and figure out the five trees that I'm talking about, is that first off, let's do the easy ones. Behind the monument, there is an oak tree with a plate in front of it, making reference to, uh, the memorial tree for Governor Snelling. On both sides of that oak tree, there's two large, I believe that they are maples, they're maple. There's the two. When you, when you are, uh, standing on the sidewalk of Main Street, looking back towards the monument, there is this absolute beautiful maple tree that is dead center of the monument, perfectly shaped. I have no interest in touching the bark on that tree. Behind that tree, and split apart, there are two trees that aren't well-shaped. They're ugly, as far as I'm concerned, or kind of leaning, and some of the, you know, there could be some limbing that's done. That's those two. And if you go down to the corner, and there's another monument, a small monument on the corner, and it has some evergreen shrubs around it, behind that is a, is a maple tree that's in pretty close proximity to that, those, that shrubbery. And, and what, what that tree's doing is blocking sunlight to the, the grass in front of the monument, that, that tree. So those are the five trees that I think need to come down if you want to grow, if you really want to grow good grass, all right? And I'm fi, I, you know, I'm, I, uh, I'm fine not having, you know, not having a public hearing right at this point if we want to do some more due diligence, because I think that what you need to do relative to public hearing, uh, you need to be specific about what your hearing is on, all right? And it sounds like you're, you know, if you want to say, let's have a hearing on those five trees, you know, you could do that, all right, and you're going to make a decision. But if you would prefer, you know, you really, I don't think that the council should be having a public hearing on something that they really haven't decided they're going to propose. I think you want to be at the point of saying, you want to propose this to be cut.
Well, it turns out some of these trees aren't going to come down, I hear your authority is pre-warden.
Yep, you don't have a hearing on those.
Having a hearing for that, getting the public stirred up about something that it needs to happen with, if they're happy about it or not.
Right, yeah. So, so we will try, uh, we'll try to get the forester here ASAP, and this, uh, will likely be on the agenda again for some action.
Trying to think of the guy's name, I know it.
What, what's that?
You're going to mark the trees in the intro while we're waiting for the-
If you want me to, I-
Explain where they are, but I know you've just explained-
People will freak.
I'm aware.
Okay?
Okay, we'll leave it at that.
May, maybe we could mark them after Memorial Day?
Exactly.
We're not that far away from Memorial Day. That's a scary thought, and so, okay, so we've got some idea of where we're going with that. Uh, item C, uh, waiver of petition, policy, uh, Melissa.
Yeah, at the last meeting, there was some discussion about this, I believe, and I thought, well, uh, and I can't find my copy, so I apologize, wasn't it, I'm hoping it was in your packet, all right? Okay, so, uh, so this was adopted in November sixteenth, two thousand and ten, and, uh, wanted to get this in front of the city council, um, so that everybody was aware of the actual language of the policy relative to requiring petitions. And if the city council was to consider a change, I just feel it would be, it would be unfair to make a change in policy in December, because that's when people have to get their petitions. So if there is to be a, uh, let's, let's say that the city council said, we want to do away with the policy. If you did away with this policy, that would mean that every agency that it requests money would have to file petitions with the requisite numbers, if you did away with that petition. And if you, if you wanted to modify that, that policy in any form, that would give Joan and Melissa time to, um, distribute that change in policy. So I'm not, I'm not proposing anything to you tonight, I, this is really just so that you know the, uh, the lay of the land as it relates to that.
Rennie?
Have we had any, uh-
Complaints from any of the agencies about the policy that we've had, because we've had it for so many-
No, because the majority are all window, they just need to send us a letter now. There's only two, I think, that are petitioning, and that's because one of them is raising their request for funds. They want more money, so they're going to petition for three years in a row.
Mm-hmm.
And, but I have heard talk of two new ones that are going to petition this year that will be new articles for us.
Mark?
I've worked in the industry for, not, people ask for money, but the people in town meetings saying, where is everybody?
Oh, right.
You've got these people saying, please give us five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, three thousand dollars, but there's nobody here saying, hi, this is who we are, and this is what we've done with the past money, and this is what we'd like to do with the money, were you to give it to us?
My, my style has been in the past, when I was mayor, uh, to personally call those groups and tell them that I expected someone there to speak on behalf of that article, and I would-
But there's no requirement for it?
There's no requirement, and it, it might be nice to put it in there, but I plan on doing it whether the requirement is there or not this year, this coming year.
But I have heard that the last two town meetings afterwards, people said, what was the deal?
It drags the meeting on a little bit longer, um, and that's one of the complaints you hear about meetings being too long. But, uh, some, sometimes it, it's good to hear some of the, the statistics that can be put out there, because then you can put some facts with where the money's going. They don't name names, they just say, we served three hundred and twenty-five, da-da, da-da, so. But, uh, so, Mark, you're the one that kind of started to question it.
Yeah, in the middle of the third paragraph where it says therefore, there's two requirements, um, you know, that they've been approved for the previous three elections, and then there's been no change to the amount. I was proposing adding C, that a representative from the social service agency attend the previous year's town meeting to provide an overview of how prior funds were used and how requested funds would plan to be used. Would be for the next one, because something has already happened, and you don't want to kind of screw them over, but that the, from going forward, if you haven't shown up at town meeting, then you've got to go through the petition process again.
The only, only minor change I would ask is, instead of town, use the word city.
City name.
Yep.
Town meeting day for the city.
I know, it's the main, but, but a lot of people will say, you have a nice town. Well, I'm sorry, but it's not a town, it's a city.
That sounds really good to me. I mean, I-
I agree, I think they should report.
And it couldn't, it doesn't have to be somebody employed by the agency, if you've got somebody in town that can you go up and stand for us in town, that's, as long as somebody stands up and says, I'm representing this group, this is what they did with it, this is what they really want to continue doing, please say yes.
What I, what I also did, it, it helped me with organizing my little, you see that I make a bunch of notes, I do the same thing for meetings, is I, I had their name, I knew if they were there, so I knew who to call on, so it looked like it was kind of organized, so, and that would be my intent. Then, you know, who, it would, who would be speaking on behalf of that, uh, that area there, so.
So do you want to make a motion to amend?
Would amend, make a motion to amend the city policy concerning waiver of petition for social service agencies to include, uh, the language that I previously said I could give Joan. Yep.
Second. Okay, so we have the motion, and the second, uh, with, with the one modification to the city. Um, any other discussion? Hearing done? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carried? That really doesn't impact, and it didn't, right? We'll just, business as usual?
Yep.
Good deal. Uh, jump right on to number D, Fire Department, uh, twenty eighteen budget.
So this is the, uh, the, I've been working with Jim Brewer, Chief Brewer, relative to the fire department budget. And, uh, you can see, if you just go right to the bottom line, the, the current budget is a hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven. Our proposed budget is a hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. Uh, the lion's share of the nine thousand dollar increase is driven in, is driven by the station maintenance and repair, which really has nothing to do with the floor repair that you approved at the last meeting. But, uh, what we have our eyes on really is the stairs that are out here, and I'm sure you've seen them when you come in, if not, you'll see them when you go out, that they are deteriorating. The other, the other item that has, um, has concerned us for years, and, and it's not that there's a, necessarily a code violation, but there, there is a feeling that we should have railing on top of the, uh, the retaining wall that runs along the side of the ramp, even though that is not for pedestrians, it is a safety concern, particularly at, when, on Virgin's Day, when there's kids all over the place, there are pedestrians up there. And so, the, uh, those two projects are what are driving that increase, and all of the rest of the increases are, are really just creep, to be honest with you. So I do not have the, the revenue side of this ready for you at this point, because it's a, there's a calculation from Ferrisburg, I have talked to Pam, uh, the other, you know, the, the way that the, the way that the, uh, individual towns' calculation is done, it's based on equalized grand lists. So we have numbers for Virgin's, Walt Tham, and Panton, and we do not have the breakdown for Ferrisburg, because we only, we only protect on a first response basis about thirty-six percent of their town. And so there's a calculation that has to be done. Uh, and then obviously, the other, uh, the other effect uh, will be cash carryover, and so, uh, a little later on. So I'm not looking for any, any action on, on this proposed budget, but I just wanted to let you know where, uh, what we're proposing at this point.
Any questions, Mel, on that? If not, we'll move to item number E, capital improvement and special funds.
So at the last couple of meetings, I think, I've put this capital improvements fund spreadsheet down under my report, and next thing you know, it's seven-thirty, and, uh, people want to go home. So the other thing I, I, um, I think at, at Mark's suggestion is, let's try to get this stuff out of Holly's head and onto a piece of paper so that we know a little more about these funds, so that we don't have to ask him, what's the revenue source for that one, and how's this one work, and which one's got a policy? So I, I tried to keep this, uh, keep this as one page, as being just really, I, if you want more information, I could, I could turn this into a whole history of the thing, but I wanted to keep it real brief so that you know the revenue stream, and you know what the expenses are, what, what could be used for eligible expenses, and you can tell which ones have a formal policy. And that way, if the city council said that you wanted to have a formal policy on something, you know, you need to speak up, and that's something that we'd be happy to draft, uh, for you. You know, some of them are, are so, uh, they don't, you know, you know, you could write a policy about anything, but, you know, for instance, let's take, let's pick the reappraisal fund, just for the sake of discussion. City went through a reappraisal in two thousand and seven, pretty much the peak of the market, and so we immediately experienced a, uh, uh, common level of appraisal of upwards to a hundred and four percent, and went down to a hundred and three, and, uh, now our common level appraisal is one hundred point, it's either three-one, Joan, or three-five, or something like that. I know it's one hundred and just a little bit of change, okay? So right now- One hundred point oh-one, yeah, that's pretty close to a hundred. Uh, so, uh, so, obviously reappraisal in two thousand and seven, here we are, two thousand and seventeen. We're still at a hundred percent of fair market value. Our coefficient of dispersion is another factor that you want to look at, because you could have a common level of appraisal of a hundred percent, but you could have houses that are assessed at two hundred thousand, selling for two forty, and selling for one sixty. And you'd have a common level appraisal of a hundred, but you'd have a coefficient of dispersion of twenty, and that's not good. You're in, you're being un, you have, you've lost your fairness. Our coefficient of dispersion, I think, is around ten or eleven, Joan, I think that's the number, you know, so it's, it's not, you know, I wish it was lower, you know, but it's, um, you know, it's based on sales, there's not a huge number of sales. So my point, point is about reappraisal, is you'll see right now, here we are, uh, the state, this money comes from the state. reappraisal revenue, state appropriation on a per parcel basis, I was gonna write eight dollars, but I didn't wanna be wrong, it's something like that, right, Joan? Seven or eight, seven or eight bucks, we have a thousand parcels, we get about seven thousand, but you can see how much we get, we get eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars a year. So, uh, over the past ten years, you know, that's how we have seventy-two thousand dollars. I think we're, you know, it cost us about seventy-five thousand dollars to reappraise in two thousand and seven. When it comes time for you to reappraise, it'd probably be, you know, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand, something like that. So, um, you should, you should be aware of that, because, you know, if, if, uh, if you're needing a reappraisal sooner, then the money accumulates, you need to allocate money for that, and I don't think that that's the case. So, that's just an example of, of, uh, I, I, that's one that, I don't think you need a policy, it's straightforward, but you, you should watch the money. You should watch and, watch all of these numbers, the CLA and the coefficient of dispersion and, and, you know, watch how much money you have to make sure that, you know, you don't wanna find yourself needing a, an appraisal next year, a reappraisal next year and being forty thousand dollars short in money, so. So, anyway, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, if anybody wants to, I, I think I just put this in front of you, so I'm sorry about that, I did it this af- did it this afternoon, so.
Mel and I have been having a little discussion and, uh, because of Falls Park and some of the stuff that were, I'm trying to find out. So, one of the questions that I had, was running by him, would, uh, the city council be willing to allow the basin committee to raise funds to offset expenses for improving, improvements at Falls Park? Such as, we, we wanna do a, uh, disc golf down there, uh, that's gonna cost somewhere slightly under five thousand dollars. Uh, there, there may be some funds available, but, uh, we would like to try not to use the money that is there and, and see if we can do some fundraisings. So, we've had some discussion, there is, as you can see, um, an Otter Creek Basin, uh, fund, and, uh, yes, we could ask for some money out of that, but, um, with everything that we wanna try to do down there, and it's not gonna get all done this year, it would be nice to start padding some money and see if we can start earning some interest to, you know, start doing some stuff. One of the things that Mel and I have agreed upon is, uh, one of the things that the master plan calls for is a, a new entrance, uh, different than that cable across the road, uh, where I have a, I'm waiting on a price from, uh, somebody to make a, a gate-type, um, entrance, where you could actually put a wheelchair through the center of the gate and the sidearms would just pivot, but it's all lockable to try to keep, uh, vehicles out. Um, so, that's, that design is, is in somebody's hands and they're gonna give me a price on what it would cost to, uh, do that. And if it works, Mel and I are thinking about, uh, getting a patent on it. Only kidding. Um, so, um, we've al- also are talking a little bit about doing a pavilion down there. Uh, we've gotta talk to Mel and the DRB and a few other people to see where we can actually put something on the ground. We wanna try to make it so that it's, um, friendly to, uh, people in wheelchairs. Um, and, uh, so, there's, there's, there's some ground down there that we would have to, uh, level out a little bit, because of, uh, the trees that were on certain knolls, they're no longer there. Green Mountain Power went through this last spring and cleaned them out, because they were underneath the power lines underneath the right away. Uh, so, um, so, I, I, I'm interested if, uh, and, and a decision doesn't have to be made on this, it's just that, how, if so, we probably would want a policy to say how this is handled, you know, if, if we do a GoFundMe page, um, or, you know, just accept, uh, donations. And I did do some research, uh, I Googled some stuff on IRS and donations, so, but I'm not gonna tell you what I found out, cause I don't wanna, I'm not a tax advisor.
Can you put the money through the partnership?
That's what I was just gonna talk about, is that- That, um, we, the partnership, um, particularly after the downtown basin master plan was done, has a, a big role, actually, if you will go down through that master plan, it has a lot of, um, uh, obligations for implementation of various things. And so, now our role's kind of expanded into the basin, because we've tried to tie the two together more closely. So, if, if the basin committee wanted to raise money, the run, the money could come through, um, the partnership. We're five- five oh one C three, so that people who make the contribution is tax, tax-free. And, um, we could easily do that and it's part of our role, so that's, that's one avenue that you could possibly use.
The, uh, basin committee will be having a meeting hopefully next week and have some discussion on some of the things that are going on and fundraising is, is one of the items that's gonna end up on the list of things to talk about. So, um, it, that would be great, if that, that is an avenue and, uh, the, uh, I would, I'll present that to them. It makes it a little bit cleaner and we can separate the two. Um, just that, w- we're not sure, the basin committee, who does it report to? Does it re- kind of, does it report to the partnership, or does it report to the city of Virgin's? So, you know, it's, uh, you know, we gotta, we'll make sure that there's a, a clean tie here, but, uh, everything is done above board and, but those are, that's a, that's a good approach, I like that. So, uh, then, uh, we don't need to get, uh, any decision-making on that, we just-
So, you're getting the, the, you're a committee, I mean, it's not a committee that's appointed by the, by the city, it's an ad hoc volunteer group, so.
No, it's all volunteers, ad hoc. Yep.
They can decide, uh, you know, they're their own director.
I wanna, I'll, I'll take this item offline with, and meet with Rennie to find out what would be the way to handle that is, and, uh, because it probably would have to be advertised a- as partnership versus, uh, the basin committee. That way, it's a, it's a known organization, five oh one C three. So, okay, I'll have that discussion with you if you, when you have a minute.
So, if, if, if anybody on the board, if they read through this, you know, really, don't hesitate to pop me an email. If you wanna say like, you know, Mel, I don't unders- you know, can you elaborate on such and such, just let me know, I'm happy to, happy to do that.
Can somebody remind me what the John Donley, uh, John, yeah, Donley Fund is all about?
Sure. Sure, so, uh-
It's been a while, I forgot.
The, uh, what it is, is there was five thousand dollars bequested to the city of Virgin's. It used to be called the Blaney Fund, and that's because it was the Blaney, it was the Blaney family that donated the five thousand dollars and it was called the Blaney Fund for probably forty years, until Joan and I did a little bit of research and found out that it, that the Blaney Fund specifically stated that it was to be in the memorial of John Donley. So, we immediately changed our, uh, changed our records and everything, and so, that's what tha- that is. It's a five thousand dollar bequest and the interest thereon to be used for the worthy poor of the city. Now, you can see that that money, uh, you know, hasn't, you can, you can see that that five thousand dollars has earned and not spent, sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars. There was a time when Joan, Joan is the city, what's that net, what? Service town service officer, um, and if there is, you know, someone, Joan, there was a policy at one point that Joan could spend up to five hundred dollars a year, okay?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's a money amount. I am authorized to spend up to so much money a year, because we have used it for, in the past, when it was the Blaney Fund, like ski pants for kids at the schools or winter coats or, so that they're aware if there's a child in need or someone in need to contact us and, and we acted on it as a council back then.
Could, uh, a small amount of money, uh, whatever, whatever the dollar figure could be, uh, be donated to something like, uh, either the fuel fund or the, uh, or the-
Yeah, it's a worthy poor. If Jackman's called and said we have a family wouldn't, yep.
Yep, or the food shelf. So, I, I, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't think we wanna let it get out of control as far as having too much, but I think we-
No, I don't think it's made as a donation fund, like to donate to the food shelf. It's for, uh, someone worthy, poor within our city needs help immediately.
Okay.
That's what the la- the language of the bequest said, you know, the interest thereon to only be, for, to be used, I'm about, we're only in there, for the worthy, poor of said city, all right?
Worthy, poor of the city.
Now, that's what it says. Now, uh, you know, so one of the things, if you take that literally, you know, if you donate money to the food shelf and the food shelf serves multiple towns, somebody could argue that, how, you know, but I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm, you know, going into, peeling the onion a little bit too much here, but I'm just telling you, it is, that the, the bequest is restricted, uh, to that. And so, you know, we had a gentleman here not that long ago who got into a prescription thing, where he couldn't get his new prescription, because he didn't, he couldn't pay his old debt.
I remember that.
And so, so, they approached Joan, uh, came to the city council, city council authorized X amount of dollars to basically pay this Virgin's, this was a Virgin's resident, pay the Virgin's residents' prescription debt. So, then they would be eligible to be able to get their new prescriptions through Medicaid or whatever. So, it's been used for, for, for that as well.
Okay. Well, any other questions or discussion, uh, from Mel?
Do you have a tip, say they close out fund by June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, does that mean they disappear at the end of?
Yeah. Yeah, they would.
So, they, we won't have a tree planting or a pump house by the end of this fiscal year?
Won't, won't have a pump house? We'll have a fund, uh, you know-
Those two funds will no longer be on-
Well, I, you know, let me tell you my, my motivation, all right? One of the things is, is really, if you have reserve funds, they're really supposed to be approved by the voters, first off. That's really a literal, if you look down through these and think tree planting fund, was, did the voters of Virgin's ever set up a reserve fund for tree planting? I think the answer is no, all right? But, you know, there was a time where they raised money for tree planting. So, one of the things, one of my motivation is, is anytime that you have a fund, they really should be approved by the voters, number one. Number two, it has to be audited sep- as a separate fund, and there's an auditing expense for our auditing firm to audit each and every fund. So, when you have a tree planting fund with two thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars, you know, you're probably paying three hundred dollars to audit the fund, even though you didn't spend any money. The pump house fund, it's got four hundred and thirty-six dollars, you know, just go down and paint the railing and close out the fund, call it a day. We still own the building, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be maintaining, I'm not suggesting that we stop maintaining the pump house or stop planting trees, I'm just saying, this is an expensive way to, to do things.
I just wanna make sure I understood that, you were removing those, that's why they're closing out, not that there's something that, at the, on July one, now we start it anew because of some structure I didn't understand.
No.
Okay, that's, I'm happy to have less.
No, no.
There's lines on the auditing cost, yeah.
Rennie?
Yeah, just a quick thing about the pump house, though.
That, um, the pump house has the, um, original Flanagan, Flanagan?
Flanders.
Flanders pump in it. Um, and there has been over the years, a lot of discussion about trying to raise money to restore that pump, not to make it work, but just to make it look better. It's in there, there were only, I think, nine of them built, um, there, and this is the only one left. Um, and that the pump house could actually be a historical site with that pump, uh, people could come in and look at it. I mean, we, there's a plaque outside of it that kinda explains what's there. Um, but, you know, maybe in the future, we should look at either getting some sort of a restoration grant or something, because, um, that's a valuable piece of history that's in that pump house, it's still there.
Any other discussion? If not, we're going to item number F, Lynn, that you wanted to discuss some thing about grass clippings?
Well, actually, for the last couple of years, I've noticed that a few towns and cities have added to their ordinances that you cannot put your glass, grass clippings into the road. And the reason for that is they go in and, um, get into, when it rains, it goes into the drainage basins and eventually out to wherever it goes, creek or the lake or whatever. So, I think that if we're trying to get our part of the pollution, uh, into our creek, it's our, not only our cell, our, our sewer lines overflowing, it's also the grass and the yuck that goes into the drains, and I think that's a fairly simple thing that could be done. And Michael was telling me there's an ordinance already that you can't put snow into the road and it would be an easy thing to add to that ordinance or your grass clippings. Um, and that would, and, and hopefully, would, would help, especially the drainage down where we live at Crosby Farms, everybody puts it in the road down there, and it goes, all of it goes right to that big basin. So, um, I just wanted that as a thought, and it seems to be something quite common now, which I, I think we should at least think about and address in sometime in the future.
All of our ordinances have been recently updated? Yes, we've both heard of that.
Well, most of them? Are we still, is that a work in progress?
That would, yeah, and a slow work in progress, yeah.
Um, how would Lynn get that on the-
Well, I, you know-
Schedule?
Two, two things, one is, yes, we can, we can change the ordinance, obviously, and there could be, you know, when you have an ordinance, it's a, you know, fine system, people get fined for doing it. That's, that's one option, uh, but, you know, what I wonder is, you know, abstinence ordinance, you know, can there be some posting on front porch forum, something about just, you know, trying to just get the word out, that that's just not good. You know, not have a, not quite start out with a stick, I guess, Lynn, uh-
I wasn't thinking of that.
Well, if you have an ordinance, that's what, that's what an ordinance is.
I wasn't thinking about fines or anything, I was just thinking, you know, we are, you know-
Yep.
Somebody's gonna stop you and say, don't put your clippings in the road, I didn't think anybody necessarily would find them. Um, but I think it's a step to, to start stopping some of the pollution and the nitrogen going everywhere.
Right.
Could you, uh, get some information from another city or city, city of towns?
I've seen two signs, so.
Yeah, can, no, can you actually get a, a copy of the ordinance?
I think I could.
And, uh, and maybe, uh, share that with Mel, maybe we could include it in a packet and bring it back to the table at another meeting and, uh, have further discussion.
The league may have it, I mean, it's, I'll check with the league as well, league may have a model ordinance, uh, in that regard, possibly.
So, okay, will that suffice for right now and, okay? So, could we, did I take action? Um, city managers' report, Mel?
Well, it is, uh, this is the time of the year when, uh, we start looking at fund balances and the like. And so, I, I have not done a projection at this point, it's actually gonna be pretty difficult to me, because all of our paving or the line, the clear lion's share of the paving is gonna be, you know, done in June this year, all right? And my plan is to, is to use it, that's what the line item's for. Uh, but, a lot of the line items have taken their shape. I don't, I don't, I still don't see anything in here that's, uh, that is really alarming. If you think about, uh, in the administration, we're at eighty-five percent and we're at this point, uh, you know, there's only another, you know, eight weeks left in the, in the year. Uh, police department, uh, you can, you'll notice that, that the straight time and overtime is way under budget. Uh, uh, we haven't seen that for, I can, yeah, but, you know, as, as, uh, as you all know, you know, we've been very aggressive as it relates to grants for both, you know, DUI grants, speeding grants. Um, and so, a lot of, a lot of the on-duty patrol that you see is covered, covered by grant. We've got probably upwards to seventy thousand dollars in, in payroll grants. So, yeah, that's, uh, uh, yeah, to see overtime, Rennie, at forty-eight percent, how's that looking, huh? Pretty good?
And, and half, half the police department budget, the total budget within, uh, actually a little, slightly lower than the percentage it should be at this time of the year is really great.
So, uh-
I think we have to have honorable mention, or the public works department, to see where their, where their percentage is.
Well, one of the things, well, you, you-
Well, it's, it's not over.
But, but the point, you know, one of the things, as I mentioned, if you look at highway improvements, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, we spent two thousand, six hundred and sixty. And if you remember, we did the Maple Street project, we did Pantin Road, we've got another paving, and those were all done with grant money. So, there is a, you know, if you just, if you put a hundred thou- if you'd had spent that hundred thousand, that turns that five twelve into six twelve and the percentages go, so it's really.
Other way.
Yeah, it, you know, it's really distort, it's, it distorts the numbers. But one of the things, though, if you look at winter, I wouldn't say that this was the easiest winter that we've had. Uh, but you look at uh, winter materials, budgeted forty-five thousand, which is really the norm. That's what, well, we would, that's the average. Uh, and we only spent thirty-eight thousand dollars in, in uh, in winter materials. Uh, you look at straight time uh, for the salaries and this, my budget report would include all of the, the twenty-five uh, people that work for us, Joan, right, during vacation? That's reflected in here, alright? So, even though that kind of bumped up near eighty-five percent, we're not paying that again. And if it snows, I'm leaving, but, you know, we really shouldn't, there really shouldn't be any, any overtime. So that looks, uh, that looks pretty good. Uh, the general uh, expenses, you see, you know, all of those seem to be in line, voter appropriations likewise. Uh, so I don't really see anything, I hate saying this, you know, with two months, two months left, but the re- I don't see anything jumping out, other than, yeah, we can keep talking about how much money we spent on cruisers. But when you look at the rest of the police department budget, it, it's, uh, it is in good shape. Um, recycling is fine, sewer, that's another thing. Uh, that's, is, that is, that's a little, that is concerning. Uh, and, you know, one of the things, uh, electricity, for instance, alright? Uh, we ended up use, we've used a lot more electricity and some of it is because of the solar. The solar system has something to do with, do with it, but Rick really runs that plant. You can't just turn the air down to the lagoons just to save money on your power bill. You've got to keep dissolved oxygen in those lagoons. So, uh, so that, that number right there is bothersome. And um, you know, I don't abuse, uh, if you notice back on this capital, capital uh, these funds, I mean, sure, there's a sewer capital improvements, yeah, there's a hundred thousand dollars sitting over there. I don't just go tapping into it unless there's truly a capital expense. If we're replacing a chlorine tank, two or three thousand dollars, I would go to that fund because it's a capital expense. But I don't abuse, I don't abuse that um, at all, alright? And so, uh, these are real operating, uh, real operating costs. So, it is, it is concerning uh, that, that that sewer is gonna go over budget. That's what it, that's what it appears to me. So.
Okay.
Uh, but, 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 but you'll notice that, that labor is in line. It's in that eighty-three to eighty-five percent. You'll notice that Joan has already switched over the administrative support, the capital outlay, this, the uh, the uh, sewer line replacement fund, the bond has been paid. So, you know, there's a lot of things, a lot of line items, big line items in here, that there's no more money coming out of them, alright? So it's not like that ninety-four percent is gonna turn into a hundred and twenty. That's not, that's not the case, but it is, it is a little concerning. Uh, pool, I don't wanna say don't look at the pool, but you, you really can't look at the pool on a fiscal year basis. You saw that at the, at the last meeting when we went over the pool budget. And uh, these, uh, the other remaining items are the money that uh, this is probably the one, the one area that I do run a dual system. This, the spreadsheet on Fund Eight and Fund Nine that I do in an Excel spreadsheet is just easier for me because a budget report, you don't have a budget for Fund Eight and Nine, you don't budget expenditures, you don't, you don't budget revenue. It just happens, and so I end up having to, I end up, I wanna see the starting point and see how much money's been spent and seeing the ending point, and a budget report doesn't give me that information. So there is another report that I could do a trial balance, which is thirty-seven pages long, you don't, you don't really wanna see that one. So I like the one-page uh, uh, Fund Eight and Fund Nine combined 'cause you can just look at it much easier than you can, than you can that. So that's all I had on budget, we'll keep focusing on June thirtieth.
And so B, Mahawi, Mahawi?
Mahawi, uh, the good news is that uh, the DRB decision was upheld uh, in court. Uh, the bad news is, is that Mahawi filed for a reconsideration. Uh, so uh, the minute that you're, uh, that you're done, you're not done. I can tell you that this, the amount of money the city spent on, on legal fees could've paid for at least a, a third of the railing that we were fighting over down there, just to provide safety to people on the island. But um, uh, we're not done with that one, so, sorry. Uh, item C, VB two housing associates, that's the appeal that some of you were, were involved with. And they appealed, they did appeal again, and that hearing, we had that hearing last week sometime. Oh, yeah, and, you know, really, the whole battle is about the reserve fund. I mean, they really believe that because their lending agency requires them to put nine hundred and thirty-four dollars a month into the bank, uh, in essence, paying yourself, they really feel that that is an expense and should be included. My feeling, it should be zero. Uh, the Board of Civil Authority feels that it should be five percent. And last year, when they appealed, the judge ruled in favor of the five percent. I, I, uh, when I'm there, I actually defend the Board of Civil Authority's uh, position reluctantly. I, I really think the number should be zero. I don't think you can pay yourself and call it an expense. I just don't buy it and I never will. No bitterness here on my end. So anyway, uh, so that's, that's that one, and I, I don't have any other, other topics, Mike.
I was gonna say, you don't have any minutes left.
Good, there you go, good.
Maybe I can start early, 'cause mine's, um, okay, start off with senior citizens' council. Again, I wanna thank those that did provide comments, uh, however, you, whatever comments you did made. Uh, Rennie has, uh, Rennie and I have had some lengthy discussions and, about this because um, he's pointed out, and I totally agree with him, that uh, this shouldn't be something that the city council appoints. If they do, then they gotta do, follow the open meeting laws. We, we want this casual, we want involvement. This, this whole thing of having a uh, senior citizens' council um, is to try to get involvement with the older generation. That doesn't mean that we're gonna leave the younger generation by the sideways, by the sidelines. I was in hopes, and I mentioned to Rennie, that we create some form of a, a template pattern that we can use some verbiage, mission, mission statement that will allow us to bring those other groups in. Um, part of our planning commission hearing that'll be coming up, and I'll tell you more about that in a little bit. One of the, part of the city plan, it talks about how we get involvement from the citizens. So this is where this document would tie back into the plan. Um, so, um, I'm open for any suggestions. I, I gave some verbiage, um, and Rennie has said that he will help with a mission statement, but he wants to know what the purpose of this is. I was, I'm in hopes to uh, have a Cracker Barrel fairly soon. And right now, the way the month is going by, it will, probably won't happen in, in May, but it'll definitely, I'll make it happen in June. Um, and go visit, the first place I wanna go is the senior housing, and, and just talk to them to see how we could possibly get some of them involved with uh, things that are going on in the city. A part of this whole uh, document would be to get uh, some sort of a volunteer base that would be able to help uh, in some cases, offset um, items that the city would normally have to pay to do. Uh, I'll use the example of um, get somebody qualified that could run a lawnmower, a, a rider mower and maybe do the park. And while that person is doing the park, hopefully we could be using uh, some of the city crew to do sidewalk repair. Uh, this wouldn't be a, a full-time, they would do this day in, day out for months at a time. It would be a, uh, whatever uh, Jim would need uh, for his crew to do a project. And so that's where we would try to tie this together. It would be also, and, and it, it could be a younger person, too, that could volunteer to do this. Um, but also, um, we know that there's some work that needs to be done at the swimming pool. Uh, painting, I'll use that for an example. Maybe we could get some volunteers, uh, some elderly individuals, maybe get one to kind of lead the group, give them what the marching orders are, and then um, go in and perform the function of, of painting. Um, just so that it, they have the proper guidance and somebody is, is the leader of the group. So, um, that's, that's, that's a real short condensed version of what I'd like to see. Uh, Rennie did point out, I could have my own ad hoc uh, group, but I would, I would rather have input from the council on what they see as, as the mission of this group. So, comments?
I like the general idea of citizen council. I'm not sure I wanna focus just on senior, although under sentence one, I fall under senior, apparently.
And, and.
Comes on you fast.
I know.
This information was pulled from the web.
Right, I'm.
Okay, so it's, it's cut and paste.
I think it might be, if, if we had a citizen council of eleven, fifteen, twenty people who wanted to volunteer from whatever age or backgrounds, and they wanted to have a subcommittee that wanted to focus on senior issues and pull together some other people who wanted to focus on that to talk to the senior council, I think that might be a better fit for, for other people within the city to not feel like suddenly we're focused on becoming a retirement community.
Well, part of the issue is a, a person that is older than I am, which is hard to find in the city of Virgin's anymore, um, approached me, careful now, Lynn. Uh, approached me and said, you know, and they gave me an article that was in the Burlington Free Press. Um, and it had to do with how Vermont is not a friendly place for uh, the elderly to live and how some towns out in Maine, uh, what they were doing to try to get people involved, what they were trying to do to make it more user-friendly and, and our, and our master plan uh, talks about those things already. So, I mean, it, it, the catalyst is all there, it's just getting the, the verbiage together, get the right people lined up and then go forward. So.
And that's, and I do agree with the, the general point, but I'm just wondering whether or not some of the questions here are more of a subcommittee within a general citizen council rather than having a specific senior council and having other subgroups feel like, well, hold it, what about us? And maybe that wouldn't happen, yeah, but it might make, might be helpful to, to gather in more voices. I can see my child riding by on a bicycle, speaking of the senior.
Oh my God, I would be curious to hear from the folks that live at the senior, senior housing, just, I'd like to hear, hear about it. You know, obviously, you know, Virgin's is rich in fraternal organizations, you know, there's Lions Club, there's Rotary, there's the American Legion, there's the Auxiliary. I mean, there are, there are a number of volunteer uh, agencies out there, but there's some folks that just don't wanna be, they don't wanna be a, necessarily a member of a club, but they'd like to give back. And, and uh, you know, I think having a, an avenue for that energy, you know, it would, would be good. And I don't, and I don't know, you know, uh, you know, I'm not sure what, what, what the result would be. You know, one of the things is, is that if this group, they're gonna, if there was some kind of a group, they're gonna find their own, they're gonna find their own tasks, alright? Collectively from the group, 'cause what you, what you don't want, what you don't wanna do is tell them that they're, you know, if you wanna call it the Paintin' Club, then, then call it the Paintin' Club, and if you're interested, paint it. But I, it'd be, I think people need to figure out what they're, what they wanna give to the community in the way of, of volunteers. Because it could, you know, I, I, I think of, you know, you know, your father, Lynn, with uh, you know, Meals on Wheels and, you know, those kinds of behind-the-scenes uh, giving that nobody really hears about. It's important that those, that, that those are, that there's enough manpower behind those kinds of benefits. And, and uh, you know, I think it's, if anything, it could be a real education uh, to, you know, so that people have a better understanding of how they can, how they can help out the community.
Matt had something to say, then we'll go to you, Rennie.
Yeah, I just, um, I would concur with Mark's assessment that I think we need a wider umbrella. Like it really offers the opportunity to everybody, all of our citizens, as detailed in our, in our master plan and not just a specific subgroup. I, I think that there's, we could accomplish more with more.
Mm-hmm. Rennie?
Well, kind of along this, uh, these lines, um, the partnership um, has gone forward and tried to uh, reinstitute the garden club in Virgin's. They, for many years, there was a garden club that took care of a lot of public areas. And uh, we have some people who are interested, the first meeting is coming up, it's either tomorrow or Thursday, I think. Um, there's also a person, I can't remember her name, who said that she would be willing to help uh, to get this organized. Uh, we've had one here before, and even some, really some of the things that you're talking about, garden clubs do. I mean, they not only put in plants, but they maintain areas, um, public areas. And so we're hoping that we'll be able to reinstitute, it's not going to be part of the partnership, I just wanna say. It's, the partnership is just the avenue to try and get it started, and it'll be on its own. Uh, but um, we thought that really Virgin's needed to have something like that um, because we've got more and more areas that need some beautifying and, and maintenance and that sort of thing, and a garden club could do that.
And that meeting is two o'clock Thursday at City Hall?
I think you're right. I couldn't remember when it was.
It's two, it's two, two o'clock, and it's at Thursday. And I, and I, and I think it's in Amy's office. So, I think that's what the email said. So, um, that was, thank you, Rennie, that's a good subway, tugway, 'cause I had you on the list down below to talk more about it. Um, okay. I, I've got enough where I'm going to step back and regroup a little bit and I'll have another little sub-meeting with you and see where we can, might be able to go with this because all the pieces are there, it's just how, where do you, where's the starting point? And I just thought, I would use the senior housing as, as a point. And I wanna try to advertise it when the meeting is gonna be, uh, um, so that not only the people there at that building, but other seniors, they, they suggested maybe I come in when they, they do a meal there and just, you know, break the ice, because a lot of people go there and have a meal. Uh, I see I'm, alright, so I'm gonna bring that to closure for now because we are getting near time. Um, other topics of in- interest, um, wanna make sure that everybody is aware about the transportation summit this Thursday at the Bixby La- Library. Um, Rennie, you're going, right?
Yeah, I'm going.
Yes, action. Okay.
I put bolster in front of that one.
Yep, so, and uh, we gave Jude a copy so she could advertise that over the uh, TV, get that. Uh, Linda, dear update, low, uh, greenup day, please.
Uh, well, the weather did not cooperate. Our numbers were down a little bit, um, maybe, maybe not down a lot, but the Cub Scouts and the Girl Scouts and, and some groups really had a high participation, so it kind of screwed our numbers up a little bit. Um, but I wasn't able to cover the city like I normally do with uh, with volunteers dispatching them out. Um, but we had a hundred and sixteen volunteers come out, um, we picked up sixty-three bags of trash, two tires, and I myself found a surveyor's. and I myself found a surveyor's stick that, that went in the trash. So, it was, uh, aside from getting a little wet, it was still an okay event.
Good, and hopefully, you're gonna consider to do next year?
Sure.
Thank you very much. You did a great job, uh, well-organized. Um, the only part that I had a little heartburn with was the weather.
For some reason, I, I put the request in, but it was denied for decent weather.
You gotta talk to the two, uh, Channel Three and Channel Five and see what they can do. Thank you again for your service.
And thank you for your help.
I'm glad I could, and I hope to be able to be around next year, do the same. Just letting everybody know, City Voice went to the printer today. And after days talking about how we can get this mailed out, called EDDM, don't ask me what it stands for. I think we're gonna be able to do it, Mel, for a little over a hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Okay, so.
So, so, um, we got that, and we're saturating quite a bit. Planning Commission hearing coming up, and Mel gave me, I tried to organize my, uh, stuff in a manner that, go ahead, do it.
Yeah, Planning Commission is doing some midterm, if you will, amendments to the, uh, to the municipal plan. It was adopted in two thousand and fourteen by the city council. I think it was September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. It's a five-year plan, but there is some midterm items that they want incorporated. And so, their hearing is on May twenty-second. And once that is concluded, either the, their proposed amendments in their exact form or slightly revised form will come to the city council. City council's required to have two public hearings. The first public hearing, you're required to have, using the document they handed you, don't have it in, you don't have the authority to touch it. You have to have a public hearing on their proposal as they give it to you. And then, uh, the second public hearing, we just recently went through this drill, uh, relative to the downtown. If you remember, we, we, uh, the partnership was given a short suspension because of a map not being in a plan. But anyway, this here, these are some more substantive, um, amendments. And so, but you will have to have a public hearing on what they give you. That would be held either late June or early July. And then, you, you have to have a second public hearing, uh, with your revisions or, or without. So, just be on the lookout for that.
So, that's coming that way, and I did read every page you gave me.
There you go.
So, and it, you know, I found some of the stuff that we were talking about tonight tied, all tied together in the end. Thank you. Please, please, anybody that has any agenda items that they want on the agenda, please have them to mail at least by the Thursday prior to the meeting. It has to do with our allotment of time as to how we go down and try to break things down, so we stay in a timely manner. So, please do that. Also, Green Mountain Power will be installing a, a pole down at, uh, Falls Park. They're having a problem with Osprey on their ninety-foot pole, and it's putting power, causing power outage. So, uh, there's a stake down the ground. If anybody walks down in there, uh, down around the corner, you'll see.
Around the corner.
Around the corner.
In the middle of your, no, it's not.
No, it's way around the corner. But we're hoping that that will draw yet another group to our part, uh, bird watchers. Yep, so it'll be a nesting pole. So, it'll be about forty-three feet in the air, uh, sticking out of the ground.
They love the Osprey nesting, have the Osprey.
Well, another family, huh? Okay, and, um, doing a little, uh, just a, a safety announcement, tomorrow morning, uh, the, uh, elementary school are doing a Virgens walk and bike to school day. That's Wednesday. It's gonna be happening from seven fifteen to eight. People are gonna be transported, someone will be transported to bus, by bus, to Saint Peter's parking lot, and then, um, they're gonna walk from there. So, again, if you're out and about, be careful with the kids, uh, around. Rennie did his video, and Rennie did the thing. Okay, wanna point out to the citizens, uh, Falls Park is getting mowed, and it's looking pretty good. Still seeing some problems with people that aren't picking up after their dog. Please do so. I'm hearing comments from citizens that it's looking much better than it did. I'm hearing, actually, from people from other towns as well. So, um, if you haven't been down lately, uh, there's been some more cleanup down there, and there's more to be done, but, uh, have a walk down there, so.
It's not the parking lot. We went down the other day.
Flooded, sure, yeah, yeah. No, no problem. You can walk, you can walk around it.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, and the pike are biting. Just, everybody should know the wall-e are biting. They're catching them quite well. So, um. We have a motion seconded. Whoops, before we do? I apologize for the last one, just, first one is.
Thank you very much.
Not a problem. I like, alright, great. Meeting is adjourned.